Yeah, open the Board of Selectmen Special Meeting, May 6th, 2024, at 6:05 PM. This is the FY25 Budget and Articles. Darren, have you seen the information from the accountant today?
Yes, briefly.
Okay.
Just pull that up. You know when that came in?
This morning.
Okay.
Is that the one you're looking for? That he's looking for?
Yeah.
That's the one I got this morning.
Yeah.
Oh, I think, did it come from Alan?
9:35 this morning.
I wonder if I have an email just for him? Uh, oh, I do, sorry. No, for her. I did see her feedback from Maribel. Actually, it was from Maribel. I got something.
Okay. But you got it?
Yeah.
All right. Like we got. Twenty-five articles. Article one is to accept the reports of the town offices as printed in the annual town report. Article two is to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by chapter forty-one, one oh eight. Article three is to have the town authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow in anticipation of revenue for the twelve-month period beginning July 1, 2024, and to renew any note or notes that may be given for a period of less than one year. These are all the standard.
One for seven.
We go every year. Um, see if the, uh, article four is to see if the town will vote to authorize board of selectmen to enter into agreements with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction, reconstruction, improvement of town roads. Article five is to see what compensation the town will allow for personnel equipment being used for repairing highways, opening roads, firemen employed for the purpose of fire protection, police officers employed for the purpose of police protection during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024. Article six, see if the town will vote to accept any sum of money received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pursuant to the provisions of Chapter ninety of the Mass General Laws and authorize the treasurer to expend such funds for the purposes authorized, including maintaining, repairing, improving, and constructing ways up to the reimbursable amount according to the provisions of said Chapter ninety and said funds to be spent with the approval of the Board of Selectmen and the Mass Department of Transportation. Article seven, see if the town will vote pursuant to General Law Forty-four, Section fifty-three E, is recently amended to establish the annual expenditure limits for FY25 for all revolving funds. Those are border health, twenty thousand, building inspector, fifty thousand, plumbing inspector, five thousand, wiring inspector, fifty thousand, deputy collector, eight thousand, planning board, five thousand, zoning board of appeals, three thousand, treasurer, municipal lees, certificates fees, five thousand, and council on aging, ten thousand. Questions on verse seven?
Um, the only thing I would say is that I think, um, we should do some kind of, uh, annual review of the revolving, uh, funds that are in there. Um, I know with the council on aging, there was some concern about going up to the ten thousand. Um, I don't think they're anywhere near close to that. Um, but I don't know that they've really spent anything from it either. Um, so that would just be a, maybe an observation, um, for all of those revolving accounts to make sure that we're using them, um, as they're intended.
Okay. The article eight is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to defray charges and expenses and transfer a sum of money from free cash to the general operating budget of the town beginning July 1, 2024. Laurie has plugged in the numbers for this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it'll be, uh, vote to raise and appropriate four million, six hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred forty dollars and three cents and to transfer two hundred ten thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars from free cash and transfer fifty thousand dollars from upper federal grant for a total appropriation of four million, nine hundred one thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and three cents as necessary to pay salaries, expenses, and outlays of the several departments and to be allocated as items in the table attached for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024.
Done. Does that, um, would that, would that fifty thousand, um, leave us a, uh, surplus um, from what we need to budget?
Yeah.
From ARPA?
Yeah. Yeah, because we, we cut twenty-five, remember?
Right.
To even it off going into the town meeting, this is going to give us fifty thousand going in that we, if we have to spend it, we got it. It leaves us a hundred thousand in ARPA.
Okay.
Now, we normally do Article nine and ten, which is one to raise and appropriate for Quavon District and the Pathfinder. Laurie says we do not do that. We don't have to do that. That's all included in Article eight. Because we're not calling out the budget of the school. So nine and ten will be removed. And that total figure I just read included Article nine and ten in Article eight. It's as clear as mud. Um, Article eleven, which will now be
Nine.
Nine. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available cash a sum of money to be added to the assessors' reevaluation stabilization account or take any action there, too. That's the, uh, to fund the three-year revaluation plan, which is up in 2026, fiscal year twenty-six.
I thought it was twenty-five, but that's all right.
Yeah, we checked on it. It was twenty-six. Um, anyway, that figure is going to be six thousand dollars. Article ten, see if the town will vote to create a OCAM Center School Cable is, hmm, cable, capital stabilization account and raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be placed in the OCAM Center School Capital Stabilization Account. And that account is being made to create, um, a place where we can put some money to, uh, be able to handle the major repairs and maintenance that are going to be coming down the pipe at that school. We, we already know of people already, so.
The list is getting longer.
List is getting longer.
It is. Every year, it gets longer.
So. Uh, FinCom's suggestion there was fifteen thousand.
Yeah, and I think that first, um, project with the, uh, water heater would eat up most of that, right?
Yeah.
Yes, all of it.
Yeah, I was.
I think it's more than that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the quotes that we've received just for the tank itself was twelve, around twelve, and they said probably like about double.
Yeah.
Just, if I may note on that one, um, the accountant did say that they, that needed to be two two-thirds? Two accounts.
Two.
Two articles, excuse me. One to create the stabilization and then one to fund the stabilization.
Yep. All right.
That's going to be.
I will add, Article eleven will be.
The fifteen thousand, yeah.
Article twelve is to see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money as a grant for the Wachusett Greenways beginning fiscal year July 1, 2024. In connection there is authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a grant agreement with such collaborative on such terms and conditions as the board deems appropriate. That's a thousand.
One thousand even.
Even.
We're not raising it even though they asked for more. We're sticking with a thousand.
Thousand.
Although I, I do, I've been a strong supporter of this. Um, I do think there's a case to be made when in this budget year, we're using all of our available free cash, using fifty thousand dollars from ARPA, still not giving raises, um, to everybody. Um, this, this is an area that, um, may not be a priority. Um, possibly, but that certainly could be debated on the floor of the town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, Article thirteen. If the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money as allowed by General Law Chapter forty-four, five, B, known as the account known as the Police Department Vehicle Stabilization Account, take any action there, too. Um, we normally put eleven thousand.
Yes.
In there.
So when that's funded, July 1, does that give an, because I believe the accountant made a comment that that currently isn't enough for a new, would that make it enough with thirty thousand plus the eleven?
There's thirty-three thousand in there now, so this is only forty-four thousand.
New ones are going for about forty-eight.
Forty-eight, fifty.
Yeah.
I, I think we need a little more information on what's being replaced and
Yes.
why it's being replaced and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
Article fourteen, see if the town will vote pursuant to General Law Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half to establish revolving account from fire permits for the fire department expenditures involving training for the town during its fiscal year twenty, twenty-five and beyond as as for revolving funds listed on the Section F of the revolving fund bylaw, Chapter twenty-three of the general bylaws, not exceeding twenty-five thousand dollars during any fiscal year, take any action there on. That's new.
And the accountant had feedback on that one.
Yes, she, yes, she did state that she didn't think that this time would possibly be the best time, seeing that, uh, the town could use any funds.
When, when you're taking money and putting it in like that, you're taking it out of the general fund, so. Twenty-five thousand cap. I think they've only got twenty-five hundred
Mm-hmm.
on fees anyway. But still twenty-five hundred coming off the total for revenue. Um, I mean, if we're using two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get by this year with the school increase, we really can't afford to start taking money out of the revenue end. You know? We can talk to Tim about that a little bit more. He, he's working tonight. He's not able to be here.
So that basically reduce that, if we were in a deficit, that would basically increase the deficit by twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's what Laurie was getting at.
Yeah.
We're, talk to Tim about that a little bit more.
Yes.
Yeah.
Article fifteen, see if the town will vote to hear a report from the Town Hall Planning Committee or take any action there on. Tom, are you guys going to have a report ready?
That regard to?
Building?
Yeah, well, is it not planning board, right?
No, 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 uh,
Yeah.
Building committee.
That'll be ready.
Okay.
So do we think that at the special town, we'll take a, a vote of the voters on ideas or their, their willingness to move forward with a plan? I thought we were going to do that at the annual.
Non-binding referendum.
Yeah.
We, we need a little more information before we put that on.
Yeah, I think we're behind.
So we need their report. And we really should have the youth study. So, yeah, probably September. The article sixteen is to see if the town will vote to accept Section nine A of Chapter thirty-two B Mass General Laws. Mass General Laws, which states, shall the town pay one half of the premium costs payable by retired employee, a group, life insurance, a group, general blanket, hospital, surgical, medical, dental, and other health insurance or take any action related there, too. And actually, the next article goes with this. Article seventeen is to see if the town will vote to accept General Law Chapter thirty-two B, Section twenty, and establish the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund effective July 1, 2024, or take any action there, too. Questions?
I'm good with that.
The trust fund is to pay for this going forward for future employees. Retirees, not employees, retirees. Um, along with this, Laurie had some other suggestions. Board needs to come up with a policy
Mm-hmm.
on how to implement this.
Yep.
And one thing that keeps coming up is, um, that we can limit, but we can't limit. Who can be on it? Got a, our attorney's letter from last year specifically says we can't do that.
Right.
The Supreme Court has said no. However, if an employee is not on health insurance and retires, they cannot now come on the health insurance. We can deny that. But anyone who was on the health insurance when they retired has to be on it.
Okay.
So it limits anybody certainly less than the twenty hours that's not eligible for health insurance?
Yeah.
And if they have a plan from somewhere else, um, and they're not currently getting it, they wouldn't be eligible. But they could switch during their open enrollment the year before they retire.
Yeah. Yeah, they have to be on our insurance prior to the retirement.
Okay. How about, um, years of service? Um, is that an option? No?
No.
Good question. Not now.
Go ahead.
Well, sorry, old term I drove. Um, so you're saying that the attorney said that that you can't, it's, you're not allowed to set this policy per town with age.
We can't determine who's on it.
So it's so anybody who has had insurance that retires from the town, even if they've only been here one year
Yeah.
would be as eligible as someone for longevity purposes? Like if, if you said, you.
In order to retire, you have to have twenty years in anyway, according to the retirement board.
Oh, of course, the retirement board, they have to have to be twenty years employment with the town of OCAM?
With any town.
Anybody in Mass, the Mass Municipal?
That you're, that you're covered under the retirement system, yeah.
Okay, so the information that I received it was that you had, you, that the town was el, the town was able to set the two parameters for years of service and age.
No.
Did you, did you see the one that came in from the other town that was provided by our accountant? For the town of Brookfield?
No, I got, I got our attorney's number. That's all I have.
This is what Laurie provided from another town for Brookfield. And it actually states like years of service. And that's what she, I mean, I'm I know what we, I was told having that conversation, so.
We don't have to set the policy today, correct? It would be
Oh.
after adoption or close to adoption if that happens?
Yeah.
My concern basically is educating the townspeople because the last time that was brought to the floor, there was a lot of, well, there was zero information as far as parameters given is what we would be doing. There was no amount given to the townspeople other than a very inflated millions of dollars. So I feel like we need to educate the people so that they can vote appropriately on this.
We'll also pay sixty percent.
See, that's what I mean. They can, that's, I think that there are, what we do for a town policy or bylaw, then, or however we're going to.
By adopting the law, we have to do fifty percent. That's the law, period.
But then.
Once that's adopted, the board of selectmen has the authority to raise it above fifty. Same with an active employee. We can do that at any time also.
And in that agreement also, it states that if someone at the age of sixty-five, they only need a supplementary insurance, which is a lot less than paying for a full-on cross.
Right, when you retire, you're going on Medicare.
Medicare and a supplement.
And the supplement, the supplement is the town's. Like MedX two. That's what it is.
Yeah, so they, I mean, all, it seems like if written out correctly, we can set clear parameters for our retirees.
Although it sounds like Brookfield's policy is in conflict with legal counsel's advice.
Yeah, I gotta bring this to them. Um, most of this is, is in, in compliance with the law. You know, it's just that one area.
And Laurie seemed to be very knowledgeable about it because she does it in multiple.
She does it all day long, yeah.
That's what she does, so that's why I.
And from my understanding as well, I thought you could be, a policy could be set. Um, and I know that Laurie had suggested the board have a policy implemented, like Cindy said, to educate the people. There are just going to be questions and then you say, well, we're not sure. Well, people might not want to vote on something that they don't know what the groundwork is going to be.
And Tim House also, Chief House, also willing to do, um, a PowerPoint presentation to educate the, the residents at the meeting and also if it could go out in the advisory, the voting advisory for this town meeting with a little bit more information. It would be helpful. I know initially the cost was going to be prohibitive, but then after further looking into it, talking to Laurie, the amount of a, the actuarial study that needs to be done is a cost of two thousand dollars to the town because it can be done by her and one of her colleagues. So being small town, it's going to be a minimal amount. Even starting the trust could be done with a minimal amount of money.
Yeah, you're right. Um, and that two thousand dollars is, uh, covered by ARPA. So it's not costing the town anything.
Right. And my understanding of the trust is so that in a line item, we're going to do with the insurance, there would be the retiree benefit would be put in there, so we'd be understanding what that would be. By putting money in a trust every year is when the town comes to a point where we are, can't pay that for your retiree. Then you dip into that trust fund versus it's not like you put that money in every year and we draw it out of the trust. The trust is to cover us in the event that we don't have money to cover the retirees. And if our parameters are set correctly, if you have such a minimal amount of employees at this point as one, hate to say it, but is gone, then there, another one coming along. So it's like, we don't have a lot of full-time employees. So it's not like a town of North Brookfield where they have all the school and everybody else and it's millions of dollars. As one retiree completely retires, then there'll be somebody else. So they don't think there'll be a lot at one time.
No. No.
Where do we get the money to start the trust?
You could actually take, uh, stabilization money to start the trust.
Okay.
DOR has allowed that.
That'll take two-thirds vote.
Yep. I believe Laurie said five thousand a year is a safe.
I, yes, I, I believe that's what she had, had said moving forward, but where this first year, she said that two thousand would be enough to get it started.
Yeah.
If it's voted in and passed as of for the July first fiscal year, then that gives you as a board opportunity to do the, the rest of it, according to what Laurie said. I mean, does Laurie typically attend the town meeting, the general town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So if we could educate with the PowerPoint, she's there to answer questions, maybe it'll be a much more educational meeting this time. So if we could educate with the PowerPoint, she's there to answer questions, maybe it'll be a much more educational meeting this time.
You want this back?
Yeah.
Now you can have it.
Ms. Pucci has her hand raised?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, Barbara Pucci, East Hill Road. I just wondered if our finance committee and accountant have made any recommendations about these articles from a fiscal standpoint for the town? Thank you.
The meeting they had the other night, they were in favor of it. They just want to know where the money's coming from to get it started, and we just answered that.
Where would the money be coming from?
Stabilization.
And what would the amount be, the full amount to get it started?
She suggested 5,000 a year go into the trust fund. The actuarial report that needs to be done is $2,000, which will be done this year, and that will come from the Opera funds.
We just need to vote on that at our next meeting?
Yeah, it'll be the first meeting of the month, so.
Yep.
Regular meeting.
Okay. And again, I think I appreciate that our board has accepted articles and we do leave it to the people to vote on. I think it would be ill-advised to circumvent the people from having a, a chance to debate pros and cons for any of these articles. And so I appreciate that we're, we're allowing these articles to go forward.
One more question, please. So that was for the finance committee, you said in their meeting the other night that they were in favor of this. How about the town accountant? Has she made any recommendations from a fiscal standpoint?
Yeah, she's, she's been responding to us all week long, telling us how to set this up.
Does she make any recommendations from a fiscal standpoint for looking at the state of our finances right now in town?
Not that I recall. No.
Recommendations through the finance committee, perhaps?
Well, FinCom will be giving a, actually, they're meeting Wednesday night.
Okay.
They're meeting Wednesday night.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing specific that says it in here. All right. Article 18. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56, to authorize the Board of Assessors to grant real estate and property tax abatements exemptions up to 100% of the total tax assessed to members of the Massachusetts National Guard and reservists on active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal year in which they perform such service, subject to eligibility criteria established by the Board of Assessors. The authority to grant abatements under this vote shall expire two years from acceptance unless extended by a town vote or to take any action there too. I don't have an issue with that.
No, I don't either.
And I don't think there's going to be a high utilization from this?
Right. 19 is to see if the town will vote to increase property tax exemption amount for veterans in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, from currently $400 to $800, the maximum allowed by General Law, Chapter 73, Section 4, the Acts of 1986. And by Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1978 or take any action. Just allows the town to allow the maximum exemption for veterans. I'm not sure with that either.
I would hope at the town meeting, maybe we have an idea of what our historical abatements have been for this, because I don't know that we, we have that knowledge.
The assessors do.
Okay, yeah.
It's their article.
Yeah, so I think it would be good to hopefully have that information so we know what the potential financial hit would be.
Yep.
Excuse me.
State your name.
Paula Vakis. As to assessors, I'm familiar with assessing and I'm not sure what the town of Oakham has. As for their veterans, there are exemptions for like one, for 400 for like a 22A to 22C. There's also a full exemption being for like the town of Barry has a $1,000 exemption for a 22E, which is 100% disability qualified. Less than that is a 400 exemption, so I'm not sure here, is this just for a Leslie and 100% disability qualified? Or is this for a full 100% disability qualified? I don't know what.
100%?
Has as to no exceptions. And then there's also a new one out there that if someone rises in the line of duty, their spouse or significant other is fully exempt to real estate taxes. That's a new statute that has come out. So maybe that's something that should be clarified prior to doing this.
The assessors will do that, they, they put these articles on, so they have the numbers.
Right, that's why.
This is what they wrote.
For 20, that's why.
I guess it's the last shape.
I just read it too.
Would that bylaw, would that be a bylaw?
It's adopting the state statute.
Okay. So that would probably just be an annual town meeting record?
If you voted in, it's good for two years, then it has to be renewed at the third annual town meeting.
They will establish their guidelines and will, by vote of their May board meeting. That's coming up this month.
They have an explanation here, it says they are, there are currently 15 Clause 22 veterans. Those with 10% disability. $225 of the exemption amount is reimbursed to the town by the state into the general fund, this increase will result in a $6,000 increase overlay for FY '25. That make sense to you?
In a sense it does, I know for the town of Barry, I work with the town of Barry, so I'm familiar with assessing. And exemptions there, anything less than a full 100% qualification veteran's disability, it's a $400 exemption, anything at a 100% disability is a $1,000 exemption through the town of Barry. And then there are some new statutes that have taken place and have come into law that we abide by because of that. And it's state, state guidelines, it's something we do, and I wasn't sure with what Oakham did.
Well, currently they're at 400.
Okay, and that's probably something less than 100% disability qualified.
And it going up to 800?
Yeah, okay. Article 21. See if the town will vote to amend Chapter 8, Section 1 of the general bylaws. Section 1, there shall be a finance committee consisting of five legal voters of the town who shall be appointed by the moderator as herein provided. No elected or appointed town employee shall be eligible. Town employee shall not be eligible to serve on said committee. That's what it is now. Adding to that, the town council put, members of the finance committee may serve on uncompensated ad hoc or advisory multiple-member boards, but shall be prohibited from serving on multiple-member boards for which compensation is provided by the town. So. That's the the internet committee.
Yep.
The two members of FinCom had to resign from the internet committee because they couldn't do both. This would allow it, they're not compensated.
Pax and Rec, they couldn't even be on Pax and Rec, it'd be all on finance? Still can't be because they've.
They're in charge of their budget.
They charge their own budget, has to be a budgetless committee.
Budgetless, yeah.
They can't vote on them, they can't be part of it.
I think we skipped number 20.
Oops. Yep, we did, Article 20. Is to see if the town will vote to expend the sum of money from the police cruiser stabilization account for a new cruiser replacement or take any action there too. That's what we need some info. What what car is going, why?
Yeah, because if there's not enough money, they'd be looking for money, more money.
Right.
We could might get enough money to buy the cruiser but not to outfit it. And there's no sense to have a cruiser if it can't be outfitted.
Use some of the equipment from the previous cruisers.
Some of them, they can do with some of it, not all of it. Different model gears, you can't fit.
Tweak it.
Certainly, like the cages, you can't fit in certain models. That's why we need more information on that. I don't believe it on there, but.
I mean, even with the 8, with the 11,000 we're putting in this year, still doesn't bring it up to the amount of a
No.
a new cruiser. It's just not there.
Do you want to take it off or do you want to leave it on?
The town could always vote to hold, hold it, right?
Yes.
Or pass it over?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, they can.
So I, I would prefer, you know, potentially we get more information. He gets estimates. And if it's not going to be enough, then he could request to have it held over or no action.
No action for the, put it on the special.
That's what I was gonna say, look at it at the special town meeting in the fall.
Okay.
If we think then we have a better handle on the money.
Article 22. Is to see if the town will vote to amend general bylaw by deleting Chapter 6 Personnel Rules and Regulations in its entirety and replacing it with the following. Article 1, Purpose and Intent. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108(c), the purpose of this chapter is to establish fair and equitable personnel policies and system of personnel administration based on merit principles that ensure uniform, efficient application of those policies. Section 2, Application. All employees of the town, including employees of the public library and all employees of appointed or elected boards, shall be subject to the provisions of this chapter and personnel policies adopted pursuant thereto. To the extent that these terms, that the terms of any collective bargaining agreement conflict with the provisions of this chapter or personnel policies adopted pursuant thereto, the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement shall prevail. Three, Adoption of Policies. The Board of Selectment shall promulgate personnel policies that define rights, benefits, and obligations of employees subject to this chapter. Section 4, Personnel System. Personnel policies adopted pursuant to this chapter shall establish a personnel system which shall include but not limited to the following elements. The method of it, excuse me, the method of administration, a system which assigns responsibility for the personnel system, including maintenance of personnel records, implementation of effective recruitment and selection processes, maintenance of classification and compensation plans, oversight of application of policies and periodic review and evaluation of the personnel, of the evaluation of the personnel system, recruitment and selection policies, central record-keeping, rights and obligations of employees, and other elements of the personnel system as deemed appropriate and necessary by the Board of Selectmen. It was written by town council to update our personal regulations.
And it looks like our bylaw began in June 7th of 1963. Was updated again September, or sorry, it was updated again in 2002 and 2012. And we simply can't rely on bylaws to stay up with the ever-changing personnel policies that were required to follow by the state and federal government. And I absolutely feel that this is the best thing for the town of Oakham to adapt to the realities of managing a ever-changing employee personnel.
Yeah, just, just looking at the past three years with the new state and federal HR guidelines, the bylaw doesn't address those at all.
No.
At all.
And it's vague and could be interpreted different ways, the current bylaw. And, yeah.
And depending which part you look at it, it says two different things.
Yep.
Clearly says two different things, which is, are you getting trouble? I would suggest that we look at the personnel regulations, give that another once-over and make sure that that is fully up to par. I know we just had them done two years ago, but
Yeah.
Just make sure everything is up to, up to date on those.
Are we any closer? Have you heard anything from Rutland?
Not, not recently, no. And the last article I left open, it's a potential citizen's petition, so whenever we get that, can add it on.
And I believe that was being withdrawn.
Hi, Pucci, yes, thank you for following up and checking in on that. I will not be submitting a petition for this town meeting.
Okay, all right.
Thank you though for following up, I appreciate that.
No problem. So we have take that off, and that's it.
Do we have to adopt these this evening?
Yeah, because FinCom is meeting Wednesday. Any other discussion?
Susan Turner, the Braintree Road. Um, could the Alden Fund be used to shape for that retirement? It fits the elderly classification.
Question.
Isn't that a good question?
That wasn't the intent of it.
No.
No. I'm not saying it couldn't, we could vote it otherwise, but that wasn't the intent of the beginning of the Alden Fund.
Looking into.
What was the intent of that fund?
It was more to help somebody who's sick and give him something nice that would brighten his day here or there. There was nothing about long-term and there was nothing, uh, there was something about anybody who was on the poor farm or anything like that was not eligible for something like that.
It was more of an innate type of thing?
Yeah.
Just curious, I didn't remember what it was about.
It, it was, in a way it's kind of vague, but you know, he gave the in, one incident, you know, like if somebody is sick and. They want to have a cigar to make them feel better for that day, go ahead and do that. And it wasn't just for elderly, it was for anybody in town.
It's been used for like um someone who had a fire, I believe, uh, in the past.
It has been used in the past, somebody that was in a very serious car accident. And couldn't pay her rent for her house that month or whatever, it was used for that also. Those are things I know from the past that it's been used for.
Is that where the seniors that they're gift cards from? Is that?
Yes. The Council on Aging uses it at Christmas time for gift cards to the seniors above seventy-five age.
Susan has a question.
Susan Turner from the Braintree Road, um. It was interesting when you read the town council thing about the um. Employment. Why was the library singled out? Would the Board of Selectmen have the authority over the. Um, employees of the library or the library board of trustees?
When it comes to the HR pot, we have jurisdiction over all HR employees. The operations is the board of, library board of trustees. That's the only difference.
Okay, thank you. Paul Vakis. I'm wondering, had the town negotiated in reducing the school budget? Um, or do we just accept it the way it is? The reason I ask this is because I know you're reducing town items, budget line items by twenty-five-five, I know that is. And I'm curious as to why we're not. Helping the town employees with these funds as opposed to just giving it to the school and accepting what they. Give us as a percentage. Breakdown. It seems like they keep increasing their budget and budget.
Mm-hmm.
And.
They do.
And most of it, maybe ninety percent, has to do with salaries and increases, ten percent is probably the rest of it. Because I looked into, you know, a lot of what the salary line looks like and it's quite up there. And it seems like what we're paying is probably their percentage increase. I don't know what the color is for the town. And what the color is under the finance budget for the school.
Well, color isn't gonna mean anything.
Yeah.
We have a four million dollar budget, they have a forty-one million dollar budget, so.
Right.
Three percent on either end, you can't.
Right, that's why I'm wondering why aren't we. Negotiating to reduce what they can put into and be able to fund that twenty-five-five that we're just breaking down and not, you know, supporting for the town.
We really don't have much wiggle room to negotiate with them.
All we can do is vote against it.
Vote against it at town meeting?
Yeah, that, that, a motion can be made.
Right.
On the town floor to reduce.
Mm-hmm.
The total number.
Right.
You know, but.
Yeah, because I think in the lineup, it was what, training for police, training for fire, but you're reducing.
Yeah.
I think that was discussed in um a previous meeting that I happen to watch because I was kind of curious, why are we reducing that? I mean, towns always seem to get the short end of the stick, and I think state guidelines too, pretty soon they're gonna regulate that. Police do need to have training, required to have training.
All unfunded mandates.
I know, I know, and that's why it'd be nice if we were able to, you know, do some adjustment in the school budget.
With new growth, with two and a half, we can raise this year a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
School alone came in at a hundred and forty-four.
Right.
And they reduced it last week to by thirty dollars, thirty dollars.
I'm sure they have on their funds.
But.
Be able to reduce it for us, you know?
But the problem is, the state formula is what's killing us.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not interested in doing anything about that.
No.
Because it benefits everybody east of four ninety-five.
Yes.
You know?
Well, maybe at town meeting, we can vote against it and see what they can do.
Well, that's, that's.
To fund the town, I mean, municipal as I see it, is just getting slammed and no one's.
Yep.
You know, we just can't fund what we want. Like I said, training and other things that you're reducing the budget by twenty-five-five.
Yes.
It's, it's crazy that, you know, we can't, you know, support that by funding, reduce the school budget, whether it's Pathfinder, whether it's Quabin. By that amount, just so we can fund those for the town.
Pathfinder only went up twenty-four thousand.
Okay. But still, that's an increase, I mean, the salaries, I'm sure, it's just, the salaries are outrageous.
Yeah, and to even layer on top of that, the school system gets, we're trying to get a retirement. Funding for our post-employees.
Mm-hmm.
And our tax dollars are funding the individuals that work at Quabin with that benefit. So we're funding the school.
Right.
And all their employees, and our town, we're asking the town to just that, some of our municipals. And this is one, only at this point impacting the police.
Right.
Not even fire, because we don't have full-time fire.
Right.
And the highway.
Right.
So it's minimal, um, but our, our tax dollars are funding the school.
Mm-hmm. I looked back at a report, just as a little bit of a shocker, that. In the school, it was back in twenty-two, so I don't know who's still there, who's not. I just kind of, I want to throw it out there because I want you to hear this. There's, I was looking at. A report that they had, and they used to list the teachers and their salaries back in twenty-two. There were. About a hundred and sixteen teachers that made eighty thousand plus. And now, that's, you know, that was a few years ago.
Hmm.
There was twenty-plus teachers that made over a hundred thousand between teachers and staff. So we're just funding their raises, their increases. Which is crazy, when we're trying to scrape by and not pay the police what they want for training, which is going to be state mandated pretty soon. Fire, I would, you know, I mean, it's just stuff that should be known out there. Anyways, that was my.
That's what my wife said, that every retired teacher at Quabber Regional School District gets that supplemental insurance.
Yeah, and we're paying for it. And that's not everybody, I mean.
Coming out everybody's taxes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I was just looking at anybody eighty thousand above or ones that make in three digits, six digits or above. That didn't include everybody else that's on that. Agenda for being a teacher or somehow on the payroll there. School district, so it's not only our towns, all the towns that are gonna be. You know, fighting to stay afloat in a sense.
I wonder what their percentages for their retirees, for their health insurance. If it's more than fifty-fifty, I was gonna think of, we school does fifty-fifty.
Is it contract, a three-year contract, or do we know?
Pardon?
The school's contract, is that a three-year contract that they have? Do we know?
Usually it is, but I.
They just did them, didn't they?
I think so.
Think they just did them this year.
I think one year that they only did like a one-year contract to see if they could get beyond.
Right.
The financing, but um usually schools are three.
Okay. Like I said, this was from twenty-twenty-two, so that's, you know, a few years ago, but still, you know, we keep increasing our percentage. To help support that, and that's really, you know, mostly their salaries, isn't my feeling, is what we're supporting. Not to say, I mean, I love teachers, I have friends that are teachers, but I just feel like we're a small town and we really need to help support our in-town. Now budget, but yeah, we're trying to reduce it down to under what, two percent? And get by, and like, trying to, like I said, fund time employees to have benefits. Retirement. This is a thought is, you know, negotiating what we're paying the school to help support our own community.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Article eight, article eight is where you gotta bring that up.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, if I could just say, uh, a few points, um, I think both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Um, have uh participated uh with the uh school department. We requested them to come, we requested information from them, they've been forthcoming. Um, they did uh take three, four staffs, I believe, um, at their budget, have reduced it four times. Granted, the last time was a, a net savings of thirty dollars. Um, there are multiple reasons why Ok, Okim is in the situation it's in, including. Um, not uh raising and appropriating the entire amount that we are able um for multiple years. Um, and uh, I, I believe at the Finance Committee, uh, a member of the Finance Committee pointed out. Um, you know, where we stand, um, uh, just objectively with um. Our, our tax rate compared to uh other Worcester County communities, and we are, I think, third from the bottom. Uh, and so there's definitely a lot of reasons, uh, including, uh, as the chair mentioned, the state formula. Uh, uh, which um, because we don't have uh the level of poverty, because we don't, because we have higher house values. Um, we are, uh, I, I, I think in the eyes of people east of four ninety-five, uh, appropriately penalized. Um, or not supplemented to the same degree that um gateway cities um would be funded. I mean, we're getting uh minimal state funding, whereas um other communities are getting a, proposed to get a hundred and four dollars per pupil. Um, and none of that is the, is the school department's fault. Um, and I just, I, I do think it's important um that uh it's clear that the school department has. Um, listened to us, um, and has been a, a solid partner um in um. In this process and recognizes the position that we're in, but as a, as a municipality, we do need to look at how we. Address our financial future, um, and how we can recruit and retain employees. Um, I know, I don't know that um creating a, an us and them uh with the school i- is gonna get us anywhere. Um, uh, in the future. I, I, I think there are bigger issues, um, more long-term issues that we have to look at.
Thanks, Erin. When our motion to adopt these.
I would move we accept the um articles uh as presented and or amended, um. Yep, for the annual town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Board have any new business?
No.
I don't think so.
Any old business?
Uh, I do have one thing, um, I would request that the highway superintendent. Uh, or designate, uh, evaluate uh a culvert at two sixty-seven Sanders Road. And take any action, um, as uh he or his designee sees fit and make recommendations. Um, should they be needed to, for the Board of Selectmen.
Well, no problem, here.
Okay.
Okay. Any public session? Right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Are you gonna pull under fifty?
Oh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hold on.
The ARPA.
It's in the motion, it's in the.
Okay.
Fifty thousand.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I got that in.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, proceed.
I'll try again, I just want to make sure.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven ten.